Let me change you please. Welcome to the zoning board on September 9, 2025. My name is Marty Akins. I'm the chairman. Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Chin, Mr. Hamill, Ms. Barry, Mr. Franco, Mr. O'Brien, the board members. To my right and left, Art Clark, Mrs. Griffin. Behind me, Mr. Conlon, the Director of Inspektional Services. You have a cellphone or a pager, whatever you got, please shut it off. Don't interrupt the meeting. If you want to speak, please step outside. Lot of important people talking and important stuff going on here. We'd like to hear every word we can. I appreciate that. If anyone's going to speak tonight, please stand up and raise your right hand. If you think you might, if you think, if you don't take an oath, you will not speak. You do not take an oath, you will not speak. Everyone understand that? Okay. Mr. Chin.
Just ready to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the matters now in hearing. Yes, thank you.
We go to ZBA 202544, Christopher Cowell for a variance to 260 Bellevue. Counselor, you want to speak?
Good evening. In regard to this proposal, there's been some inputs and correspondence. The owner slash applicant, Mr. Murtaugh, his home has some plans with the hope that he can return to have more nostalgia than is beneficial to him and to the neighborhood.
I can do November 18th. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Come a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 2544, Ward 6, Christopher N. Carroll for a variance to demolish the existing 1.5-story single-family dwelling down to the foundation and reconstruct a two-story, single-family dwelling on the premises number 260 Bellevue Road, Quincy, Mass. I move to continue the matter to November 18th.
Second.
On the motion, if you got a new set of plans, Mr. Carroll.
They'll be submitted through the board.
Two weeks. Very good. Thank you.
I'll communicate with you. You're very welcome, sir.
On the motion, CNN all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Yes. Could I have a motion away from last meeting minutes, please?
Mr. Chairman, move to accept and waive the reading of the minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting of August 26, 2025.
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor.
Aye.
Under tonight's minutes, we got, in case that might take some time, so if you could be brief, speak, don't try to repeat what someone else said, get to the points and we can make a decision on those statements. ZBA 256, Andrew Childs for variance to demolish the existing one-car garage which fronts Ardell Street and construct a two-car garage and storage above on the premises number 24 Vershire Street, Quincy. Sure, name and address for the record.
My name is Andrew Childs, 24 Vershire Street, Quincy, Massachusetts. All right, I have, my last hearing was on July 22nd. When I presented with you guys, I received a great deal of feedback largely to shrink the structure and to sort of be a little bit more mindful of the space, particularly on the second floor. So I went back with the architect, reviewed the building code, reviewed, talked with the building inspector, made a number of sort of design adjustments. And so what we're presenting here today is those changes. So just to reacquaint yourself, this is the property with, it's a through lot on Vershire Street and Ardell. Our project primarily focuses on the Ardell Street side. This is the existing conditions. What we're proposing now is a two-car garage that's one and a half stories. This is in the plan set that you guys all have. I thought it would be beneficial for everyone to sort of be able to specifically see more easily the changes that we made. So I shaded an outline of the originally proposed silhouette of the structure. We reduced the height of the structure by three feet, eight inches, down to 20 feet, and then shrunk the footprint by two feet in each direction along the width of the property as well as in the depth back into the property. As a result of doing that, the garage door has also shrunk down to seven feet, which to me is sort of the minimum viable height of it. And then the second-story windows have been reduced in height to be sort of more of a clear-story transom style like windows.
And what's the height on your second floor of that garage?
The total height is 20 feet. On the inside, the maximum ceiling height is now seven feet, but that's over less than 50% of the floor area of the second floor.
You still have a set of stairs there?
Yes, there's still a set of stairs to get up to the second story.
That's what I didn't want. So that's my question. Anything to?
The design intent is with the second-story windows to make it sort of look like a shed dormer, like the image, inspiration image down on the bottom left. This is the sort of side neighbor elevations showing the overall volumetric reduction. We also changed the window layout in response to some feedback that we got from like the last zoning hearing. And then this is the first-floor floor plan, again, showing the reduced footprint. You can sort of start to see the dotted outline on the left side. The left parking space is now already somewhat compromised by the second stair. This is the section view, which I think a lot of the lines of questions came from last time. The first-floor ceiling height has now been reduced to less than eight feet, which again is like sort of pushing it for a viable ceiling height. And then the second story height, let's sort of zoom in here. So on this, actually, let me first sort of address on the first story, our ceiling height is seven foot eight, which is already, garage door heights are supposed to be seven feet tall and the minimum clearance that's typically required unless you go with some special hardware is like a foot above that. So we're already going through like exaggerating circumstances on the first story. The building itself needs to be at least 16 feet tall to bring an overhead electrical sort of line in. So that was like a baseline for how, you know, the minimum height that we could possibly build the thing.
Who's talking it up? They put posts on there, they put posts right through your roof and up, and they can have it six, six feet high. It could be 10 feet garage with a pole up there.
Do you?
Go ahead, finish, sorry.
From a building code perspective, I talked to Bruce Knapp, our building inspector, as well as the architect. If you're going to have a stair, there needs to be a six-foot-eight clearance height above the nosing all the way up. So that was sort of a dictating height for us. We couldn't reduce the floor height, or the ceiling height rather, on the second story any lower than that and still maintain the sort of access up and down the stair. Beyond just the building code too, the concern that I heard from you guys loud and clearly was that we would eventually convert this space into like living space, although that was the original intention. When we had the first zoning hearing, we sort of went back to the drawing board and sort of understood, look, I'm willing to sunset that, not pursue that any further. All I want here is additional sort of storage space for us. And so rather than consider it living space, what we wanted to do was like what dictates living space? We actually looked at not just the building code, but the sanitary code about what defines like livable space. And in order for it to be livable space, it has to have an average ceiling height of at least seven feet across the floor area. And you can't count any floor area that has a ceiling height of less than five feet. So that's shown these sort of reddish pink rectangles there. This little yellow section is showing the small area of the second floor that's seven feet with the ceiling height. And then from a floor plan perspective, this is just marking up that sort of same area. So the floor plan as we start, 525-ish square feet, take off the five-foot ceiling height portion of it, that leaves us only 400 square feet of usable space. And then if I reduce it down by the ceiling height that's less than seven feet, it's less than half of the second story is usable, and that sort of defines the fact that it's not actually like habitable space. So I thought that that was a meaningful sort of adjustment that we made in our design to still make the project viable, but you know, basically make it such that I could never convert it to like living space, which is what I, the concern I heard loud and clear from last time. Also, this is sort of zoomed further back elevation of the street from like a massing perspective. Those are like real measured ridge heights of the abutters. The garage structure now at the 20-foot height definitely looks to me as like a second type of structure. It's not a primary structure on the lot, but rather a secondary structure, given that it's about two-thirds of the abutting properties in height. And then one sort of point I wanted to sort of drive home is that, once we do this project, provided the board allows us to proceed with it, is that we will essentially be further restricting any future development at our property based on pure access requirements. By building the structure, there'll be no way to get any sort of excavator or any other type of equipment close to, you know, the property. So should we ever want to do an addition in the future, we're not really able to as a result of doing this. So for us, again, the intention of this project is, this is our like one chance, let's like do it to the extent that we can. So this is a summary of the design changes that we've made. I think you saw those in bullet points on the memo that was already submitted. But we've reduced the structure from two stories to one and a half stories, just based on the floor area and the overall height. We've shrunk the height by 15%. We've shrunk the footprint by about 16%. And then as a result of those two, we've reduced the volume by 28%. So a non-trivial sort of good faith effort to make the project, you know, smaller in response to your feedback. We've also changed the fenestration, but that was a lesser feedback that the board had given.
So if this is for storage and that's all you want to use it for, why don't you take it, why not have a set of pull-down stairs that just pull right down?
From just like a regular use and access perspective, this is not meant to just be seasonal storage for us. This is meant to be able to like get easier, bigger items up and down with more regular regular.
That's the house's fault to do that. Use a garage where you want to put something for a while.
I don't have a viable attic in our garage, or sorry, our basement is like totally packed full with things and the door itself is already very small to the basement. I, I'd love to invite you into my home and show you all of the spatial efficiencies that we've like taken on, but.
I'm all set, thanks.
I have no questions this time.
No?
No question.
No questions.
I'm good with the presentation, right?
You can have a seat. Is there anyone here that want to speak in favor? You step forward, name and address for the record? No, no, no. You have to come up and speak in the mic. Did you take an oath?
I did.
Okay. I know there was like four people back there, I saw it in.
Linda Brown, 23 Ardell Street.
Yep.
And I'm very excited for this to go forward. I think he's done a great job designing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nora Duddy, and I live at 25 Vershire Street, right across the road, and I'm there since 1999. And they've done a lovely job with their landscaping and everything, and this will be a lovely addition to their property.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? You step forward, name and address for the record.
Loretta Grant, and we're at 30 Ardell Street. And I've lived in Quincy or had this property for over 60 years on Ardell Street. So I've been looking at that old structure for a very, very long time, and it's original to there. So I'm very excited. They did a great job doing it. They take impeccable care of Ardell Street, which is, I'm looking directly at that garage every day. So I'm really excited to have something. That would be so great for the neighborhood, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Second call, third call, call of pilot hearing closed, no new correspondence?
No.
No. Anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call, no call. I'm just going to vote no because I just don't like the set of stairs in there and I just don't. It just bothers me that that could be converted, I mean, you can jack up, just things you can do, what I don't like, it's just, it's too much like a second house that way. I know one thing, there's going to be no water in that, yeah, no sewer, no nothing. I know that, but it just, just, I don't know. Too much, too much people want that second house on their, in their lot, rental, it just bothers me that that could happen.
Would you want to have a provision in the, in the decision where it cannot ever be used for as control?
Well, it can't. It can't anyway, it's a garage, but they would just come back and change it anyway if they wanted to do that, right? They'd come back and ask for a second place and then change, change and put in a set of plans. I get it, I get the whole thing. That's the one thing that bothered me about the whole project with a set of stairs.
I think stairs don't bother me as much. I think having a legitimate set of stairs inside is better for safety, in my opinion, than pull down and trying to drag stuff up and down or bring heavy things up and down the stairs. So I think he's, he's done a good job in terms of trying to accommodate what I want at the last year, so I'd be in favor.
Okay.
Having lived with both a pull-down and a walk-up there in Florida.
Good job, actually.
I don't have any problem with it.
I think you've done a nice job bringing it down and addressing last meeting's concerns. I'll be voting in favor.
Yeah, me too.
Come a motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. ZBA 25-6, Ward 3, Andrew Childs for a variance to demolish the existing one-car garage which fronts on Ardell Street and constructed two-car garage with storage above on the premises number 24 Vershire Street, Quincy, Mass. I move to allow the petition.
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor. Aye. Opposed? Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Further under tonight's agenda, ZBA 2522, Wallace and Assets LLC, for a very, a variance special permit. We already had this, what we're looking for is one thing from you so we can have a vote. Everyone already spoken, Mr. Counselor? We're looking for the drainage.
We're going to keep it short and sweet, Mr. Chairman. Edward Fleming for the record. Yeah, and actually, I don't think we need it for this project, Kathleen, thank you. Edward Fleming for Wallace and Assets LLC, and I'm just going to introduce Carlos Sculte. Carlos is here to share with you the drainage information.
Good evening. Carlos Sculte with Civil and Environmental Consultants. Thank you for having me tonight. Sorry, we couldn't make it last time. I understood there were some questions about the stormwater management design. So I could just walk you through it.
Yeah, if you could, that'd be great.
Yeah, if you're familiar with the building, the existing site has three multifamily buildings on it, large paved parking lot in the back. It slopes from Old Colony down to the big parking lot in the back that's behind Wally Wine and the CBS area there. So everything basically just flows over land untreated to the back of the lot there today. So what we're doing is we're introducing a subsurface stormwater chamber system that's going to sit in between the building and Old Colony, and that's going to accept all the runoff from the building roof area and the parking area, the drop-off that we have to get in and out of the garage. And it's going to take all that roof area and that pavement, collect it all, and it's going to store everything up to and including the two-year storm event with no outflow. So 100% of the storm water from everything up to the two-year storm event will be stored, there'd be no flow coming out of the site at all. And then that system is then designed to reduce the peak rates, to hold some of it back. So in all the other storm events, the two, or the 10, the 25 and the 100-year storm event, there's less total flow leaving out the back than what's happening today. So that's the overall design. I can go through the numbers if you'd like to know the numbers. Yeah, so under existing additions, in the rear of the lot, there is 1.1 cubic feet per second going to the rear of the lot. And in the proposed conditions, there's .1, which is just kind of a runoff from the grass areas in the back, so just incidental runoff. In the 10-year storm, it's 2.2 under existing, it's reduced to 1.1 in proposed. In the 25, it's 2.7 in existing, reduced to 2.6 in the proposed. And in the 100-year storm event, it's 3.6 CFS, reduced to 3.4 in the proposed condition.
Very good. I have no questions.
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
I have, the question I have is, the concern from the local storm runners was that the, the stuff now that's out there, does that go into the city drainage system?
So eventually it does. There's some catch bases and some dry wells in that CBS parking lot and the Wally Wine parking lot. Some of those catch basins continue out to Chapman, and then it drains to the city system. We believe one or two of those dry wells that are in that large parking lot, we have the repair shop, those just recharge on-site. So some of them do go to the city system, some of them recharge on-site. The ones that are in that parking lot that don't go anywhere, they haven't been maintained in forever and they don't really work, right? So we're aware of the flooding that happens there.
Do you have any idea with the square footage that you have, how much is going in there into that, into that parking lot?
Square footage?
I mean, based on what your, your calculations from your square footage?
Yeah, the entire site does today drain there. So 100% of the site, and the site is, yes, 30, 30,000 square feet roughly, 30,800 square feet. So we're not changing the area that goes, we're holding back the stormwater so less total stormwater goes back there.
And you, you're not putting any water into the city system?
Yes, it's just overland flow, so there's no piped connections, so we're not tying into the city system. So everything's flowing exactly like it does under existing conditions, it just overflows just into the parking lot there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
That answered my question, I was looking at those numbers, and I'm fine with that. I'll be voting in favor.
I'm in favor as well.
I'm in favor as well, considering the extensive engineering work they've done.
It's clear that you're managing all your own water, so I'll be voting in favor.
Likewise, I do. That's, that's my point, was if they're taking care of what's on their site, they're not contributing to what's leaking.
If they can all do that up there and if they don't, then they're going to have to get a pump station, so they're going to have to eventually look at that, correct?
I think, I think with all the development that's going in, in that general area.
It's going to help, help a ton.
That's going to help everything in.
Everyone.
So that's, that's the way I feel about it. I'll be voting in favor.
Come a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 25-32, Ward 5, Wallace and Assets LLC, for a variance and special permit to raise the existing structures and construct a five-story, 62-unit residential structure with 98 parking spaces on the premises number 18 Old Colony Avenue, Quincy, Mass. I move to allow the petition.
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor. Aye. Opposed, so moves.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor, thanks for coming back.
No, no problem.
Further under tonight, new business. Case number 254, Bowo Trin for a special permit to establish a residential short-term rental on the premises number 144 Curtis Avenue. Is the African representative here? All right, if we could, there's only going to be four of us on the board, two, two members have to recuse themselves so they can't sit on it because of business reasons, I guess, the conflicts. So Mr. Chin would be out, so there'll be us four sitting in.
Hello, good evening.
Name and address for the record.
Bow Trin, 33 Hannah Street in Quincy.
Tell us what you want to do.
Questions to the state law for short-term rental. I'd like to apply for a permit, special permit for a short-term rental in, in the address 114 Curtis Avenue. And before I was on the board for reconstruction, the single unit several years ago, in the same location, approved by the board, transformed to a second, two-family unit. Currently, my mother stay in the first unit, and the second unit I plan out to do short-term rental is only a two-bedroom house. Before, it's a single house, I have a very hard time to rent it out. Sometimes it's vacant for several months, and I'm behind on mortgages. So, but, but now, my mother stay in this first unit, and the second unit I plan to do is short-term rental.
When you came in front of us before to redo your property.
Yes.
And we went back and forth for a while.
Yes.
You told us your mother's going to be living there with you, but you don't live there.
Yes, I live around 100 yard away.
Yeah, but you do not live in that house.
No, I don't.
All right. I have no other question.
My, my, my mother stay, his name on, on the deed.
I get it.
Yep.
No questions.
I have no questions.
That's a condition of, of, of the permit of, of deeds, right?
The owners will stay in.
You have to, you have to live in the house.
Right.
Okay. No further issues.
You can have a seat. Is there anyone here want to speak in favor? First call, second call. Ma, want to speak in favor? Aye. She didn't take an oath. Second call, third call, call of pilot hearing closed, no new, from same stuff?
This is from the GPW, this I received today in opposition.
All right, we'll read that. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Anyone opposed or undecided? Come up, name and address to the record. Now, I might be wrong, but I didn't see you take an oath.
I did.
Did you? Okay.
I did. My name is.
I didn't see you stand up, sorry.
There were people in front of me.
I saw, I mean, big dude.
Okay. My name is Terri Sullivan, and I'm currently living at 116 Lennox Street, but I am one of the homeowners of 120 Curtis Ave., which is a direct abutter to the right, where my mother and my brother currently live. I also lived at 108 Curtis Ave., three houses up, from 2017 until this past March, and frequently walked past 114 Curtis Ave. construction to visit my family. The original application for the construction to convert a single family into a two-family in 2021 was submitted as owner occupied to the zoning board under false pretense. Mr. Trin has never lived at 114 Curtis Ave. His home address was and is 33 Hannah Street. The building permit application was also submitted as owner occupied, allowing Mr. Trin to avoid paying the SOAR rehab fee. A permit was issued on 9/27/2022, and occupancy was finally given on July 2, 2025, with this project taking over 33 months to complete. During the construction, there were long periods of time with no activity, the job site was left a mess, there was a dumpster being used by contractors coming from other locations, the grass was overgrown, and Mr. Trin had to be asked several times to cut the grass and clean up on the site. Due to Mr. Trin's disregard for the neighborhood and his, in the history of being absentee landlord might feel me as opposed to this application.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call.
Hi, my name is Joanne Casnelli, I live at 96 Curtis Ave. I agree with what she's saying because that wasn't eyesore for a very long time, but my concerns are the congestion in that area. Starting with Cherry Street all the way to Washington Court, if you're familiar with Curtis Ave at all, it's very congested. We have Pagnano Towers, and we have another rehab house to the side of, of Pagnano Towers. There's constant medical, people, ambulances, shift workers, constantly parking, parking is very difficult. This street, as you know, is one-sided parking, it's supposed to be one-way. It's just, it's dangerous for the children, they're riding their bikes, it's hard to park residents and apartment residents, homeowners, it's difficult to park and/or to have company and park, delivery trucks and all of that. I just think that it, it would just add to the congestion. We also have Bay, Bay Inn Restaurant around the corner, that is posing a problem, and that's right in the same sort of block, and it's just, it's just congested and dangerous. So I oppose it.
Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Is there anyone else?
Hello, Felicia McBrien, I'm at 98 Curtis Avenue. I oppose it because of the security concerns and the congestion. Security concern, we did have a short-term, it wasn't, I don't think it was a legal one because it was only while the owners were there and when they moved in those short-term people, and it was right behind us on Hannah Street. And although there wasn't loud music, there was always a lot of lights moving in and out in the, you know, nine o'clock at night, it was just noisy and disruptive. And the parking is really congested there because of the two facilities that are there. People park everywhere, they park on, sometimes on both sides of the street, sometimes, in the past, we've had to call the police to say, you can't get down the street. So sometimes you wind up going down Beechwood and having to come around to go and park. Our parking, I don't, we don't usually park on the front because there's not much space to park. So we have some parking in the rear, but it's consistently blocked, our driveway coming out, so you have to jump the curb to get out. And every morning you come out, it's like, do I go left or right, which way do I have enough room to get out without jumping the curb? And so I oppose it because there's just too much activity and too much parking and people on that end of the street besides the residents. Thank you.
Anyone else opposed or undecided? Counselor?
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Akins, members of the board, Richard Ash, 7 Silver Street, Ward 2 City Counselor.
Richard Ash, seven Silver Street, Ward two city councilor. I will say, you know, my job is obviously to represent the communications and what I've heard from residents over the last couple of weeks with respect to the short-term rental proposal. Outside of the congestion, the street is a one-way, and it's not always used as a one-way. But the, you know, Curtis Ave is parking on the right side from Baxter Ave to Hannah Street. And then there's parking on the left side from Hannah Street to Washington Court, only because the envelope of Pagnano Towers makes it impossible to park on the right. So outside of the congestion and the vehicles, you know, trying to find places to go, I know that the driveway of the rebuilds is big. The house looks great. I would venture to guess that Mr. Trin could find an awesome tenant. And unfortunately, given, you know, the headlines, the Airbnb on Bayside Road in Squanam was just a headline from the Quincy Sun yesterday. It's hard to police. They're hard to, they're hard to control. And I believe that that's why the city, we represent that if you're going to apply for a short-term rental that you live in that property as well. So for those reasons, while I appreciate, you know, the construction and certainly bringing a nice home into the area, I do have to say, outside of the three homes that were represented tonight, I heard from two other nearby households and also had a great conversation with Mr. Trin prior to this meeting. I know he was very receptive to me voicing the concerns from the neighborhood. But unfortunately, I would have to say that I concur with the dissenting and opposing residents and look forward to your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Anyone else, last call? All right, I'm gonna read this into the record. I think it's Sullivan. Is that your mother? All right, this is from the woman's mother. I'm sorry, that's my jibber-jibber. I'm great. You wanna understand my darkness?
Zoning board members, I'm an eighty-four-year-old woman who resides at one two zero Curtis Ave in Quincy. For the last fifty years, my property is to the right of one one four Curtis. I have serious concerns regarding Mr. Trin's request to allow a residential short-term rental next door to my property. Transient guests can lead to increased noise, parking congestion, trash, just the quality of life of long-term residents. I have quiet, comfortable surroundings where I feel safe and fair, having miscellaneous strangers in and out at all hours. Mr. Trin almost took three years to complete the construction and was absent from the property with no regards to the condition of his property. Trucks would pull up to use the dumpster, and the property was a mess during long periods of construction inactivity. With his history, I am afraid that there will be little oversight in my sense of safety. Security will be greatly compromised. Thank you for your consideration. Mary Sullivan, one two zero Curtis Ave, Quincy.
Thank you. Calling father hearing closed. You know, it did take a long time, and we went back and forth with this property for a long time. He told us he was gonna be living there with his mother on one, and his mother was gonna be living in the other. And we did, I think, over and above and beyond as a board to help him build his property, what he told us. And now we're hearing other stuff that went on there that shouldn't have been on there. I'm just voting no. I don't think he should have a short-term. He don't live in number one, so he can't get it. But for other reasons too. It's not just because he doesn't live in there. What's going on with that neighborhood and not being fair to them either? Not cutting the grass, not doing this, not doing that. You don't treat your neighbors like that, so I'll be voting no.
I'll be voting no because it's non-order occupied, and that violates the rules that have been presented to us. And also, for three years, that property was a mess.
Mess.
You shouldn't do that in a neighborhood that you live in, right around the corner. I'll be voting no.
Mr. Barry?
I'll be voting no as you're not truly an owner-occupant of the property at one fourteen Curtis.
Mr. O'Brien?
I remember when we approved this as a two-family, we went round and round about the tandem parking. Now, if you're gonna have tenants coming in there that don't live in the neighborhood and don't, you know, unfamiliar with it, the tandem parking would be a nightmare with a narrow driveway also. And the reason that we approved the tandem parking was because the gentleman told us that he was gonna be there to meet our standards. So likewise, I don't, I won't be voting in favor.
All right. Our motion denied, please.
S T R dash twenty-five-four, Bow T D Trin for a special permit to establish a residential short-term rental on the premise numbered one. Well, this says one one four, it's one one four.
One four.
One fourteen Curtis Ave. We make a motion to deny the request.
Second.
On the, on the motion, CNN hall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or moved? Further under tonight's agenda, now that we have. G B A twenty-five thirty-eight, Ward Ron Brandon and Christina Nado for a variance finding special permit floodplain. Construct in addition on the east side and west side of the dwelling, construct a two-story attached garage. Reconnect a nine-foot, restruct, reconstruct a nine-foot-deep wraparound porch on the south side of the dwelling. Construct multi-level porch on the rear and create new terraces and retaining walls on the east and west side of the parcel on the premise number thirty-two Bayview Ave in Quincy. Applicant there? Name and address to the record, please.
My name is Brandon Nado, thirty-two Bayview. And my wife Christina Nado, thirty-two Bayview.
Yep.
We also have Samantha Cusick here from Stone Architecture and Josh from J D E Civil Engineering representing today. We are a family of five. We have three kids, Nash six, Wesley four, and Olive, who is nineteen months old. I work for Heritage Restoration as COO, and my wife works as a community nurse for Vitra Health. We've lived in Quincy for fifteen years. Our home is used for working from home, entertaining and hosting our family and family and friends that travel from multiple states to come visit in the summertime. The goal of the project is to facilitate the expansion and update the envelope improvement of our home. We are in a velocity zone in the winters. It's not unusual to have forty-mile-an-hour winds on a Tuesday night.
More than that.
More than that sometimes. As you mentioned, the dwelling has several updates. One of the key features of this project is to remove the rear wraparound porch from the flood zone by making an independent structure, driving piles, and having it detached from the home with an expansion joint connecting the two structures. We have, in addition to the east, in addition to the west, and a two-car garage with high ceilings to incorporate stackers to make it technically a four-car garage. With the shape of the home, we anticipate having a bit of a snowdrift in the front, so we want to keep all the cars in the garage in the winter time. The garage will also double down as our shed to keep the remainder of the yard free and clear of any other structures. And then we'll be implementing a new terrace with some retaining walls on the east side. Also including the building envelope, removing all the siding, taking all the deck off, and putting an air-vapor barrier shell on the outside with new windows. From here, I was gonna pass it on to Samantha to talk about the variances, the findings in the special permit that we're going after.
Here we go. Bingo! Wow! All right, so just for the record again, my name is Josh White. I'm from J D E Civil. And this is the existing conditions plan that we had prepared by Napa Valley Land Survey. As you can see, the existing house is kinda in the center of this lot with the existing driveway right in here. And see the existing house, and they've got a porch basically wrapping around the perimeter of the house. Couple of key things to point out here. This dash line, that's the FEMA floodline with VE baseball elevation of sixteen on the northern part of the site in a butts embankment road and existing paper street. And Bayview Ave right here. As you can see, there's a pretty steep slope kinda in the middle of the property, basically starting from the, along the front of the house, back to the bottom in the backyard. Drops about twenty feet. It's very steep, and it makes this property a difficult property to expand on. Now, I'll jump over to the proposed plan for this site. As you can see in kinda the yellow, that would be the proposed building addition to the property consisting of a garage attached to the dwelling, as well as some porches and breezeways to connect to the existing structure. As Brandon alluded to in the, in his intro, the back portion right here, that will be a reconstructed porch, which will be disconnected from the existing structure as well as some more building addition on the eastern side of the house, as well as some terrace patios down to the rear yard. We're showing a relocated driveway with a twenty-four-foot-wide curb cut. We've got four spaces shown right now. As you mentioned, there was vertical space potentially for two additional spaces. So that would be a total of six on this site, which would improve their existing condition. So a couple of things to kinda note why we're here tonight. First, the existing dwelling is a non-conforming dwelling. The building height is just over forty feet from the roof peak of the existing house to the average finished grade existing out there, which obviously exceeds thirty-five feet max in the residential A zone. We've also, due to the lowest floor in the back, that ceiling being above the average existing grade, that makes it a story. So that also brings this to a four-story dwelling, which is above the two stories that's permitted. So those are a couple of the reasons why we're here, for the existing non-conforming dwelling. Suppose the, let's see. And then also, we're here for a variance request for the proposed garage. It's proposed to be located within the front setback. Sorry, I'm trying to. There you can see. So it's, this is the proposed garage. It's about seven-point-three feet off the side lot line of twenty-four Bayview Ave and about seven-point-eight feet off the right-of-way line. As I mentioned, this is a corner lot, so with Bayview Ave and a bankment road, so the front setback is pretty substantial when you really put it on this property. And then it takes up a lot of area. So combined with the steep topography on the property, as well as the ledge kinda towards the back of the property, this is kinda what drove us to proposing this garage in this location, utilizing some of the existing impervious area for the existing driveway, replacing it with a new garage area to store vehicles, better than leaving it out in the elements and whatnot. And really, if we were to do it anywhere else on this property, it would need a substantial amount of fill just to make it usable to level out the area for that particular part of the improvements. So the steep drop-off on this lot kinda is basically one of our hardships for the variance request. We've looked at a number of other properties along Bayview Ave, notably twenty and twenty-four, and they have structures of similar setbacks to the road. So that was another factor. It doesn't negatively detrimental to the area, neighborhood. And that's one of the main reasons we're here is for the variance, for this setback to the garage. Another reason we're here is for a finding in regards to the non-conforming structure expansion. Basically, we're looking to modify the existing structure, and we're requesting a finding for that work. It's pretty self-explanatory for that part of it. And then we also are looking for a special permit for the floodplain overlay district. As I mentioned, as you can see on this, the purple line is the FEMA floodline. Elevation sixteen. So basically, the existing porch, which is there in the back of the house, it's attached to the existing dwelling. So that's why, that brings the entire footprint into play, which brings us to the two thousand thirty-seven square feet that we've got within that overlay district. And we're proposing to reconstruct that porch, partially expand it to kinda even it out with the rest of the proposed additions. And because it's gonna be a standalone structure on piles, disconnected from the main dwelling and its additions, we believe that this should reduce the amount of ground coverage within the floodplain district to about eight-hundred-and-thirty-one square feet. Like we mentioned, we feel it's not more detrimental to the area. We're providing more parking on the property to. And the existing utilities would be reused and modified as needed pending your decision. And as the homeowners kinda express their ideas to stay in Quincy for the foreseeable future, so they would like to expand their existing dwellings to grow their family and whatnot, to keep. And most importantly, they wanted to keep the existing footprint and dwelling to the extent possible while still expanding and getting everything that they need to grow their family. That's.
How high is the Cooper Run in there?
Forty-one and a half feet.
And what are you going to, five, two?
Everything new that we're building is at thirty-five. We're just acknowledging that's existing.
Because of. Correct. That's what I wanna mention.
Yes.
Here's the only problem I have. It's a beautiful lot, beautiful lot. You got eighteen thousand square feet. I mean, it's gorgeous. I played in that yacht. I grew up in that yacht. Lived right across the street, the next corner on Crosby Street. We knew all those people. And they had, we had. We know all those people and and they had, we had more fun on those decks as kids and the parents did, I'll tell ya. Throwing rocks in the water and everything, it was just bizarre fun we had over their house. But that garage is big as a house on that street. It's thirty by thirty-six. We gotta do something. In height, we have to do something. You know, we're coming seven feet, there's houses here, there's a house here, and there's a, you're gonna have a house right in the corner. We gotta do something. The rest of it, I love it. I think it's gorgeous. It's gonna be a gorgeous piece of property for the rest of your life. But this thing here, if you want your your garage and you want those lifts, that's fine, you can do a story and a half there, but it's gotta come way down. It's it's just.
Is it the footprint or behind that where they get you?
It it's it's bulked.
Bulk.
It it's it's. That's bigger than mine outside though, that garage. Uh right in the corner of Crosby Street, we built a new one down there uh twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago. They don't mind twenty, so it's twenty-five years ago. Uh and I know what it's like to live in Hossneck, it's a beautiful community, you know, I live right up in the hill from, the top of the hill and it's beautiful, but I don't think anyone in that neighborhood wants to look at a garage the size of a house. I think we could just work on it. That's that's my only complaint with it. I I love it, I think it's beautiful. We're gonna have a gorgeous home, gorgeous home. We can work in that garage and we can make this work. That's my two cents.
Sure thing. Mr. Chairman, I agree with your comments and principle. Um I'm a little bit put off by the fact they've got such an enormous piece of land and yet you're looking for variance to go as close as seven feet to your neighbors on the garage. And um I think the garage is oversized, I know you want a garage, just commensurate with the size of the house. However, with eighteen, roughly eighteen thousand square feet, you shouldn't really be here looking to to narrow your, you know, your your encroachment to seven feet on on the side left and and on the front. So like Chamberlain said, you know, if we could do something with the garage, uh I'd be happier.
Sure thing. I will tell you that the design didn't start with a thirty by thirty and then outfit from there, it was, you know, what do we, oh, we have a an S U V pickup truck. What does that look like with the doors open, I'm loading the kids, you don't have to like, you know, fight. And the middle portion would be where we keep our our jet skis, so it it's like a two-and-a-half garage without the doors.
Yeah.
Um and it's doubling as our shed as well. We don't wanna put another structure in the yard, we wanna keep that one side as exposed. And then using the existing footprint is what kinda drove us into that corner. Anyway, we we kinda related how it really wasn't um the best, so we kinda landed on this with, you know, trying to satisfy the intent for it. And um yeah, um but the architecture will look like with all one structure, not a separate couch.
I I know, it's just when you drive down there, the first thing you're gonna see is the garage. You're gonna see a house, you're gonna think it's a house. Of course you won't, cause of the door, you'll think it's a house, and then you'll see this beautiful, beautiful home you have. I couldn't live with that, I couldn't live with that, living down there, my whole life and then seeing that, whoa. This house now, this is not, you know, I don't know, I don't know. Hang on with twenty, twenty thousand pieces.
One last question, it can't go on the on the right side because of the uh el- elevation issues?
Well, they got a, see that? That's that's a paper street they got over there.
Hold on one second. Yeah, so this this line right here that I'm kinda tracing right now.
Oh, I see.
That's the front setback for both both sides.
That was the business.
Yeah. It's it's twenty-five for both those side streets, so.
Yeah, and we were, I'll just add, Smith Cusick, um Cusick Architecture, the because we were trying to maintain the existing dwelling rather than completely um demolishing it, we were trying to respect where the existing utilities were, so we've got the kitchen that is in that um kind of northwest um corner and moving all of the kind of living area out to that east addition to try to put the garage on that corner. We would end up pushing out even further, which uh we were trying to avoid because what one of the kind of special characteristics about this plot of land is that it has essentially an entire um it's almost like double lot and one of that is actually completely open to the view. Um so there were several kind of reasons why we were trying to keep that garage kind of pushed over, um you know, similar to where their existing um driveway access is. Um the other thing that I'll note is that currently on the property, um the homeowners are using the underside of the rear deck um that's down on that lower portion as um kind of their shed seasonal storage. Um so in the proposed addition, um where we are kind of removing that from um the dwelling and making that the only, you know, item that is in the floodplain, all of that basically will not be used for storage. Um so we're trying to kind of find areas to kind of repurpose um, you know, their their storage needs um on site.
Hence the rent that the states have access with the homeowner.
No, I I I get it, I get it, believe me, I get it. But I just can't see that garage being, it's just way too big, it's just too big, it's 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 big, it's massive. A story and a half, you can have a beautiful, still have your lifts in there, maybe you won't have your jet skis and your four cars, but you know what? That's that's life. Maybe your jet ski's gotta be stored somewhere, I don't know what to tell you, but that's the way I feel.
Is the board's concern more to do with the height or the dimensions?
The whole thing. It's massive, it's 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 big, it's, I mean, it's a garage. You know, you just heard me, the last guy was in a garage.
I heard you.
I ain't more pissed, I ain't more st- steers it, I don't. Because bad things happen when you've steers. I'm telling you, bad things happen. Bad things happen. What what happens? Your cousin stays over three days and he stays in there, the next thing before you know it, somebody else is living there. It happens all over the city and we catch it, so.
Yeah.
Ain't gonna happen in that property, I know that, just unless the guy's got about eight hundred thousand dollars a night to stay, you know.
Um I will also just note, just for the record, that um garage is completely unfinished, there's no utilities going through it.
I know, I know, it's just, it's thirty by thirty, so.
Yes. Yep, understood, understood.
Is there a recommended dimension or what?
Twenty, a twenty-foot garage, like maybe twenty by twenty-four?
Yeah, a twen- with the vehicles that we are trying to store.
Really ain't. You ask me a question, I'm gonna give it to you, that's my answer.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like a carriage house, uh.
It is.
Probably eighteen-nineties. You know, most of the houses in the Cape had those, they were great, the help lived upstairs, but uh.
Keeping the architecture was a very important place.
It it it's great looking, it's a nice looking house, I mean, I've been kayaking by that house for years.
Right.
Um I love the improvement, but that's really mad, that that, think of my house in the Cape.
Even the one in the back, two houses down, we had.
I mean, it's great looking, but you gotta compress that a little bit, so.
Made it look like a carriage house, but it wasn't. It was fun to dream.
Can you uh can you go over the height? So as I understand that, you have the first story of your garage, you wanna also have lifts. So what is the clear height in the main?
The clear height is twelve-six or maybe twelve-eight, um and that's the the minimum to um accommodate the uh the lift that the homeowner.
And then what were you trying to accomplish, height and clear height on your unfinished storage on the second floor?
The unfinished height on the second floor, that doesn't have a particular minimum right now, it's basically just to get your um clearance for your head height as you're coming up the steps, that's what's kind of.
So you don't have, you don't know what that dimension is?
Um I, you can pull it up on here, um you can do fast map. So top of floor slab two, the ridge, fifty-six and a half, twenty-three? Did I do that map correctly?
It's a beautiful house.
So your total height is twenty-three, but you said you're, so you have ten-foot clear height? So you have ten-foot clear height in the second story, storage area is what you're telling me?
Um at probably, at the ridge, we may, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So in light of our former case, I think the um second floor storage has to be reduced significantly. Um we understand you want a full staircase and storage, but I'm thinking the dormer on the west elevation can go away in the garage. I'm less concerned about the width of the garage, we're concerned about the height and the use of the second story.
Does the board um, I, the reason for the dormer on that west side is really serving it from a an aesthetic standpoint? Um is the board worried about that staircase of just asphalt shingles if we were to remove?
I, if you'd really like a dormer on the west elevate, well, number one, the whole height is gonna have to come down to get this crew comfortable from what I'm hearing. I I think a much smaller, almost like a lightwell dormer might be more acceptable than what is proposed.
An old-fashioned I would though, that'd look nice.
West, I would say the west dormer is is there for symmetry, that it is more for purpose.
But you've just given yourself ten-foot clear, to Marty's point. You know, we just gave Vershire, so think about what we approve for Vershire as far as height on that second storage room or give up the second storage room, but that second story really has to come down significantly. I can live with the width, but I can't live with the height that you've proposed.
Mr. O'Brien?
I just, I concur with the uh debate here, man. It's 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 just too large in appearance, too big overall.
Just one quick note, on your, in your first floor, it looks like the study has a closet and a bathroom, but it also looks like the only bathroom on your first floor. So did you really want to have to walk through your study to go to the first floor bathroom?
There's, yes.
Okay. Well, I would just think you want a door to the bathroom from your kitchen area.
Which room, sorry, which floor is that?
On your main level. The only bathroom I see on your main level is off the study.
Yeah, that's where the existing bathroom is.
Oh, okay, fine, fine.
We're just working with the footprint there.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Thank you guys, have a seat. Is there anyone who wanna speak in favor?
Sorry, just letting you. Are we able to talk about the um other i- items of request or is it?
No, we got your other items of request, we got that all down.
No questions on those.
We'll talk to you after we listen to the neighbors and everything else and then we'll come back.
Okay.
Is there anyone here who wanna speak in favor? Lower it? Getting feedbacks? Peace. Is there anyone who wanna speak in favor? First call? Counsel, I'll call you last. Second call? Third call? All right, is no one in favor? Any correspondence? This should be a big one, I'll bet.
Yes, there's uh.
Five pages.
From the D P W.
Yeah.
There was nothing from the above reference.
That's fine. We could read that letter into the D P W, please.
Only one page?
Yeah, it's not bad. Four, five pages, six pages.
Thirty-two Bayview Ave. Case number Z B eight two-five dash three-eight. We received the supplemental for the above referenced project and our comments are as follows. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased due to development. Two, provide plans showing existing site conditions, layout of utilities, grading, drainage and construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Will there be any fill or change of grade due to the development? Five, upon completion of the project, as-built plan showing all utilities, building footprints need to be submitted along with digital file, an elevation certificate should also be submitted if the property is in a flood zone.
Thank you, caller by the hearing closed. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, council, you are up. Mr. McCarthy, how are you tonight? Oh, he's looking good. It's my counsel, good guy.
David McCarthy, forty-eight Whitney Road, Ward one, counselor. Um yeah, it's a great house. Uh I I met with uh Brandon, I spoke to him a few times and met with him, we talked, and the one thing that jumped out at me too was the garage a little bit. I said this might come up, uh but we were dealing with, which is a great thing, seventeen thousand square feet in Hossneck. Uh another thing that I know Brandon was very um worried about and made sure it didn't happen, he didn't wanna, you know, he's on the side and I I just wanna say the Malins are here who are are to the to the left of the home.
Right.
Um and they've been there a very long time. And we've all run around, we've all run around that yacht, Marty. But um you know, we wanted to keep that right side open for the views and the pictures and the whole thing that's been going on down there for a number of years. So um I think that they can, you know, tweak that garage and and figure it out because uh it's a magnificent home. Uh the the first thing, you know, that um Brandon said to me and uh we're not gonna knock it down, we're we're gonna do it all, but we're gonna keep, I think it's a Queen Victoria, um and um we know the hickies were in there for a long time, the carrot manicurs showed up in there with the hickies and um we know the history of the whole thing. And I, I'm I'm a big old-fashioned guy, so old school, I got, I probably keep too many things at the house, you know, I gotta get rid of, but I'm I'm uh I like all the old stuff. Um so um hopefully that they would could come back and um come back with a little more, less, less garage. Um but uh it it's a great, great home and a great family. Um and um I, there was a little concern of mine, but not much with the Malins being to the left. I know he's extending the house a little bit um in regards to the kitchen on the left and then the garage would show, it's pretty similar to the house, it's a couple of houses down, that red, the red house, kinda that same design look. But I know it's, I know they have to tweak.
You're trying to make it look like a carriage house.
Yeah. Yeah. But um gr- great, great design and and great plan and and I know they'll get there, so I'm in full support of 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 working with them to work with the board and I know uh you guys do your 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 homework up here, so I I'm sure we'll be able to work it out.
And he's got plenty of, plenty of land space while he's working.
Who is it?
So I'm uh I'm good. I think it's that, I think it's the whole place. Yeah.
The whole place.
All right. I'm about to sign off now.
I'll say I'll sign off.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. With that, we'll say, uh we'll call our party here and pause, and and let's, let's talk to them if we might about what we want, you know, uh. Man, twenty by thirty-foot garage is a decent, real good garage, twenty-two, maybe twenty-two, you know, bring that, bring that away from that house a little bit, another, I don't know, six feet, twenty-four by, twenty-four by thirty. I think you can work with that, I can, I think the board could probably work with that, twenty-four by thirty garage, still a big garage. And then uh the rest of it, does anyone have any other concerns with any of the other stuff they're doing?
I do not. I think it's a nice design, but it's just a little bit bigger for the garage.
Yeah, it's a great design, you're right, the the only uh catch is the size of that garage.
Yeah, beautiful, beautiful design.
I think, you know, I've spent a lot of time along my I N Ls even trying to get to this point, but twenty-four by thirty garage makes a a nice garage, you pull it away from the neighbors. And your height, you get, you gotta bring that down. You know, bring it down what you need for your lift and make it look so when people drive by, they're not gonna vote, shut the house, you know what I mean? Uh why don't we, why don't we move this, can we have this, can you have it done a week? So this will be in September, you have like two weeks to get this all fixed, yes? End the plan, how about ten-fourteen and we can move it further? I'm trying to get in this evening. So you're gonna have that done by, what do you need it by, two weeks?
October fourteen. I would be. I would need it no later than October first at nine A M.
You would need what?
The plan.
I need revised plans by October first at nine A M.
October first.
If this is continued till October fourteenth.
So I'll give, I'll give you, you know, twenty-one days, twenty-two days to get it done. On the motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, Z B eight twenty-five thirty-eight, Ward one, Brandon and Christina Nato for a variance finding and special permit F P O D to construct in addition on the east side and west side of the dwelling, construct a two-story attached garage, reconstruct a nine-foot-deep wraparound porch on the south and east side of the dwelling, construct a multi-level porch, the rear and create new terraces and retaining walls on the east and west side of the parcel. Preuses numbered thirty-two Bayview Avenue Quincy, Mass. Move to continue the matter to October fourteen, twenty-twenty-five.
Certainly.
On the motion, stand on all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Come on, good call, gentlemen. We'll see you then.
Thank you, thank you.
Reverend, tonight's.
Mr. Chairman, can we leave Mr. Eric alone so that he'll come back? Can we put him in so he'll come back?
Yeah, why don't you? Are you going or am I going? You going? He just had his back done today. You want to go?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go.
Yeah. He just had two shots and everything done today.
He had a couple shots.
He had his tune up.
Shots in the back.
Went in for a tune up.
Went in for a tune up next week.
That's next week.
Next week. ZB82540 Heritage Company for a variant construct, four townhouses, parking, the garage vacant lot, parcel, and the premises numbered 141 School Street. That's all?
Hey, George.
Well, the demo's up.
Perfect. Thank you, Carlos.
Just, just, just for the record, Jeff Frankels there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Edward Fleming here on behalf of Heritage Companies. Uh, Heritage Companies is a, um, is a parent company of Fort Granite Realty Trust, which is the owner of the property at 141 School Street. Uh, I'm joined tonight by Michael Kylie from Heritage Companies, uh, who you know well. Um, Carlos Sculte from CEC, who is the civil engineer on this matter. And Carlos will speak about the civil engineering, uh, aspects of the project in a second. And also Brian Donahue from Donahue Architects. Um, this is a very unique property. I, I assume that many of you have driven by and said, where is it? Because it's hard to see honestly from School Street because it really drops off significantly from School Street. School Street's much higher than the site. Um, and the site essentially sits almost in the, in the back section of, of where this, where the Star Market, um, uh, project is, uh, which is, um, you know, up in this area of the site. My Star Market building is located up in this area. Um, it's a, uh, it's an unusual parcel. It's about 7,201 square feet. It's located within a Quincy Center zoning district. Um, formerly zoned differently, um, in this area, but it was changed when the Quincy Center zoning district went into effect. Because this was, this is in such close proximity to Quincy Center. It was included within that district. Uh, as I said, it's an unusual site. It has frontage all along School Street, but the topography changes dramatically. It not only does it, as it goes down on the Fort Street, uh, down on School Street into the, uh, Fort Square, but also behind the site, which part, topography drops off significantly. So that the back of the site is significantly lower than, uh, than School Street itself. Um, this parcel of land has actually been in the, in the, I'd say the Kylie family, um, in the Fort Granite Realty Trust for years. Um, Mike actually acquired the site, um, uh, after his father passed and he took over the, the, the company, the Heritage Companies. And this, along with, if you remember, uh, kind of kitty across the street, the Fort Square, where Mike, uh, did those initial condominiums. That was another parcel of land that sat there for years. And what's changed over the years, and Carlos can talk about this in more detail, is actually the flood mapping has changed dramatically. In fact, in, in 2025, uh, just in July, uh, the city revised the entire flood zone. And the, this whole area was removed from the flood zone. So it actually opened up some of these parcels for development. So Mike has been looking over the years to, to, um, to develop some of these parcels and to create some housing. Uh, and he did a, a great job in, in Fort Square where he, when he built those initial develop, that initial development and those units have really been well received by the neighborhood. And this parcel is, has been sitting there on Mike's radar for some time. So what Mike's proposing to do, uh, in this particular proposal is to do a smaller development. It will include four townhouses, um, all along, all along School Street, but it will access or, or allow access, um, from the Fort Square, um, kind of, um, intersection. Um, and it allows access to the site from the back, um, by way of easement from, uh, the parcel that's at 20 Fort Street owned by Steve Austin, who redeveloped that site a number of years ago. And the city also owns land in the back of that area as well. So I've had conversations, not only, and Mike has had conversations not only with Steve Austin, who has agreed to provide an easement to allow access to the back of Mike's site, but I've also had conversations with the mayor, um, and with, um, Jim Timmons, the city solicitor. Uh, the mayor has agreed to the issuance of what they call a license to build, allowing Mike to develop or to utilize the city land, not only for a, a small sliver of access to his site, but also to develop the site as we will, we'll talk about in more detail. And what this is going to allow Mike to do is actually he's going to, it's going to allow him to daylight a portion of the town brook. And he's going to create an, a park or a small kind of a pocket park, similar to what the city did a number of years ago in Quincy Center. Um, very similar to that where they opened up a portion of the town brook and they created a little pocket park. Um, and that's what the, Mike's going to do that on his own dime. Um, and he's, and he's, what he's asked the city to do is give him a license in order to do that work. So, uh, Jim Timmons and I had a conversation yesterday. Uh, Jim is working on the license, um, to, for Mike to have that, those rights. And, but he indicated to me, he's spoken with the mayor and the mayor is agreeable to that. So the four townhouses will be constructed on this parcel with access, uh, to the rear through that easement and the light, and the, uh, license from the city. Um, the resident, all the residential levels will be above so that, so, um, the access in the rear of the site will be access to garage spaces. And then there's three levels of living above, and that will arise from School Street. Um, and that will have standard living area, living room, kitchen, dining room, bathroom and closet on, and then, uh, three bedrooms on the second floor. The unusual nature of this site obviously requires some variances from the, uh, dimensional requirements. And really the only variance that we're seeking here is for lot area. Because the lot area in a, in the Quincy Center zoning district, as it was rezoned, uh, is 15,000 square feet. We have about 7,200 square feet. Uh, so we're requesting the, the relief from the lot area. And the unusual, uh, rezoning of this location and from, um, from residence B, which actually would have met the zoning, uh, um, requirements to a Quincy Center zoning district presented these hardships for the site, as well as the unusual shape and topography of the site. Um, this is a really interesting, well thought out, uh, plan. And, uh, to be honest with you, I don't know that every, any, all developers could do this. Mike really put a lot of time and thought into, into figuring out how this could really may be made into a beautiful residential site. And with the assistance and the cooperation with the city, you can see on that landscape plan, yeah, it really creates a beautiful setting, um, for this new residence, uh, use. So that's our, um, our presentation. What I'd like to do is turn this over to Carlos Sculte so Carlos can walk through the site plan and, um, drainage. And then we'll ask Brian to talk about the architect.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, again, Carlos Sculte was civil environmental consultants, uh, civil engineers on this project. Uh, so a couple of representative photographs of the site. Uh, you have the two photos at the top are of the open channel portions of Town Brook, which basically run just to the north of the limits of the site. Uh, and it shows some of the context for the neighborhood as well. Uh, and I'll talk through some of the elevation changes and the other development. Uh, the big white, uh, square that you see on the aerial overview, that's the Star Market building. So for context, we're behind that, uh, with access off of School Street. So as it refreshes here, so here we have the existing condition plan. And what this shows is that the entire site is, or a large portion of the site is paved today. So there's access across, essentially looks a concrete, uh, top of the channel for the brook. Uh, and it's been paved over for years. Uh, it's been degraded. Really, there's not a whole lot of use of the site there today. So what we'll be doing is taking that pavement out, uh, and introducing new landscaping and improving the city parcels, as well as the landscaping on both sides of the brook there as well. So this plan shows the four units that are proposed on the site. Uh, with the elevation change, School Street being 10 feet higher in some areas, 12, 13 feet higher in some, some other areas, will have access into the main living unit with pedestrian access off of School Street for each one of the units. Uh, they'll be at the same elevation. So a few more steps into the ones where the, uh, street grade is lower, a few less steps where the street grade is higher. There'll be access for, uh, vehicles to access through the Austin and the city properties with those easements that Ed spoke about earlier. And there'll be two car, uh, parking garages for each one of these individual units, uh, as well as one guest space, uh, for visitors as well. And what you could see in that light blue area that you have, if I walk over here, we'll actually be removing the top part of the concrete, uh, slab that sits on top of the brook for a portion of the brook here, opening that up so you can see the water and access to it with a few vents around the outside. Uh, and then just repave it in here. And I'll show on the landscape plans that there'll be new landscaping in all these areas where it's previously paved today. So introducing, uh, a lot of new opportunities for landscaping.
Yeah, fence coming all the way down?
Yes, we will. Yeah. So along essentially the fence is not in the greatest shape, but we will be installing new fences along the front, a little bit kind of lower pedestrian level fence in these units to give a fence load. So this is the grading and drainage plan when it comes up. Uh, so this shows some of the elevation change, uh, as you're stepping down School Street, the, the first unit on the bottom right-hand side of the page, you could essentially just walk into the living level of that one. By the time you get to the fourth one going from right to left on the page, uh, it's a few feet lower in School Street. So you need a couple of steps to be able to get into that, that housing unit. All the garages are on the same level. Uh, and as Ed spoke about earlier, the flood plain actually was reduced. It used to cover the entire site. Uh, with the changes that reflected all the work that the city had done for the deep rock tunnel and all the infrastructure for years, just the flood maps had never been updated and reissued. Uh, when those did get reissued, the flood plain is contained within the channel. So it doesn't come out of the channel at all. So the site's entirely above it. Uh, we have been through conservation permission, received order conditions. We've also been through planning as well. So it's been through a third-party peer review through that process as well. Uh, we have the roof areas from the site. It can be routed to some stormwater chambers that you have located here that will take that roof off, provide some additional recharge for the snowmarch, as well as water quality treatment. Uh, and then we have essentially an overflow from the drain tubes in the parking area that goes through our catch basin, also running through these, where it's excess water, uh, that has more flow than the capacity of the channels, through over top the walls of the brook as it does today. Uh, so reducing peak rates, adding, uh, additional water quality treatment where there is none today. Uh, for utilities, fairly straightforward. Uh, there's overhead electric along the frontage. We'll be tying into the utility pole coming underground with new conduits there for electric and telecommunications, uh, tying into the existing water main in School Street for, uh, fire protection because of the number of units as well as domestic water supply. And then there's actually a sewer line that runs through the site under the, the brook that we'll be tying into for the sanitary sewer service as well. Uh, so fairly straightforward connections from the utility. You see the profile there in the bottom left corner. For landscaping here, this is really the one that shows the extent of the work that we're doing. Uh, so all that area they see on the left-hand side of the page with the opening of the brook, we'll be adding new landscaping today where there's really nothing much to speak of. It's all paved today. So all, all new landscaping that provides opportunities to enjoy the brook and the daylight portion that we have, as well as adding new landscaping, uh, along the Austin property as well, that provides a little bit of buffering between the two properties. So we don't have just a sea of pavement there. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Where the pavement ends in the back? Like if you go around and pull in?
Yep.
And you see there's two types of pavement. One's pavement with muckers and then there's yellow line.
Yep.
You don't own any of that that's been mucked up?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll show the limits. The actual parcel that we're talking about?
Right.
Is right here. And it runs essentially down the center of the brook.
Oh, okay.
And then the city owns kind of a, like a panhandle shaped parcel. The city owns a parcel that looks like this and then the Austin properties to the.
Even deliveries could come down there and stop, deliver, stop.
They could. As part of the planning board process, we ran some truck turning simulations so we could get a box truck. It could pull into the entrance, back out and come back out to the street.
And just for, uh, purposes too of understanding that CBS actually has loading bays in the back of their site, but they come in on the other side of that building. So they drive in this way.
Right.
It's a loading bay. So there's no interference with these two.
One other thing, the road that's there, the granite that's all there.
Yep.
I mean, there's chunks and chunks of granite. I'm looking at going, is this road coming down?
So, so that wall you're talking about, right? So.
It's bizarre. Like, wow. I'm looking at it going, hey, someone starts playing some stuff here. There's things.
Yeah. So, so.
It's like tree truck. People stuck tree pieces in there.
Yeah. So this, this wall here along the side where there's that walling fence on top of it as well, uh, it's a big elevation change. So with the project placing the buildings on the downgrade side of the wall, we're actually going to build a structural foundation that comes up essentially to where that wall is today. And we're going to fill in between the two. So it's going to strengthen up that wall.
Good.
And be able to address that.
Now that's going to work. Oh my God.
Yeah.
Six foot hole.
Yeah. No, I, I, I agree. We're going, we're going to patch that up and address that situation.
Good. Thank you.
And, and Mike's neighbor who's here today, who lives in the home right next door, is very concerned about that as well. And, you know, she has some, I know Mike said some great conversations with her. She has a beautiful house. Her house is the really the coolest house. It used to be a church.
Yeah, I know.
Redone and actually gone.
Sure. That's right.
Right. Exactly.
My foundation goes under School Street.
Yeah.
It's rocks. My downstairs, that storage, that one has that rock as the.
Face the wall?
No, basement goes into it.
Yeah.
I have four floors. The basement goes in. The next floor has the kitchen and the bedrooms. Um, that has that wall as there. I have no front yard or anything. Right there. And that is the, we need a man, um, is pretty much, is above it. And then I got the wire lost.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Brian Donahue, Donahue Architects here in Quincy. One little footnote to, um, our neighbor is, uh, about 15 years ago, the neighbor was, that building was a church. And for the previous owner, we renovated it into a single-family house. Um, so it was kind of fun to, to continue this, the, the plan down the street. Actually, a historical note about this road. Um, actually at one point in time in the 1800s, this was a, actually a fairly developed, uh, streetscape. There were, uh, there was a synagogue on this site. The church was next door. And there was actually a Quincy police station up two buildings from, I think there's a power station there now. So it was actually a pretty busy thoroughfare and there was a lot of buildings on it. So, hopefully this project is kind of bringing it back to life as well. So I'll, I'll just be brief. Um, the, the architecture is, is fairly straightforward in terms of the four units that are, are presented here. Let's hit it. Yeah. Okay. So the units are identical, um, uh, three bedroom, three and a half bath. Uh, obviously the, the garage level is entered from the rear portion of the site up a stair to the living level, uh, kitchen, living dining, two bedrooms on the next level, two baths. And on the top floor, there's a, uh, a primary suite with a deck that's, uh, available to all the folks that live in the house. Um, as Ed and Carlos had mentioned, the site does slope. So the garage level and the first floor level of all the units is at the same elevation. So as you go down School Street, there's just a few more steps to get up to each individual unit. And then the, uh, the plan stays the same as you go up. The, um, basic, there's another one here. There's, there's another, another sheet. We have the renderings. Yeah. Thanks. So these four, uh, renderings depict, uh, views from School Street, top, left and right, uh, straight on elevation from School Street. So you can see the, that each, each unit has a little, uh, stoop and a garden out front. Um, and the, uh, the concept here is to keep the residential scale. So we have a gable, uh, element on the front of each unit. That's a board and bat, a dark colored board and bat material. Um, the, the predominance of this, the elevations are clambered siding, um, of a, a neutral tone. are clambered siding of a neutral tone with some natural wood elements as well. On the lower right, you can see that each unit is, we've carved out a little space in the roof, so everybody has a little bit of an outdoor space. It's actually fairly generous. So that's basically the architecture. I have you to answer any questions.
Do you see our condos?
That's a question for Mr. Kylie.
Yeah, hi, Michael Kylie. Right now, not sure. I'm going to build it, and if the market dictates it. Like, today, I don't think they, if it was coming online right now, probably wouldn't be condominiums. But I do have the, I have the personnel to take care of it for apartments, because I have the building right up the street, Grand Street. So I don't have a problem if I want to rent these. I think it would be a nice addition to the rental market. It's something unique. I don't think there's many like this in the area that you could rent. So, but thanks.
Any questions?
No questions.
I have a question.
He used the word cold before.
No, it is.
No, I agree.
I feel the same way. I'm as excited about this 40-year project that I am with some of the other ones.
It's really nice.
Can you fit two parking spaces for guest parking if you gave up some green space?
Yeah, I could add that one. There was a process with the Conservation Commission that we're trying to maximize the green space as much as we can, based on some of the proofing that we've due the Conservation Commission. So the site doesn't really lay out well to add perpendicular spaces, so we had to work hard to meet the conservation's requirement and also provide the one guest space that we do have. So I think unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to fit another space.
How much more clear height would you need in the garage to be able to put lifts in the garage? So you could accommodate more cars?
Never done this, never even crossed my mind. I know it's expensive. It's something I don't like to do, because if they go wrong, and also, you got to have someone that operates those.
I think in a single-townhouse, application is more feasible than a multifamily. I'm a property manager. I agree with you 100%. Our concern is always parking. In your light, I'm parking.
Yeah, it's in Quincy Center zoning district. I just don't want to talk too much about this, but I see all these projects go through the city, and I think two spaces for a townhouse is adequate. There's projects all over the city that are going point, you know, point 73, all kinds of projects that have 150 units that are coming before us. For this, the beauty of this is the churches across the street, other than having a couple AA meetings, there's always parking right across on that park. Always parallel parking. I've watched it for I don't know how long, that that's always open between the park and the church, other than the fact of every now and then there's an AA meeting or a church assembly. But that's, it's very easy to park over there. There's several spaces on the other side of the park.
What is this performance at in terms of rental rate versus what price would you have to sell it for to be feasible? And what rate do you have to rent these units for for this to be feasible?
I really didn't do that math yet, but I bet you the townhouses, something like this, three-bedroom, they'd probably go for a little over $4,000 a month with two-car parking like that.
And then what was the sale price for you to make this feasible as a condo?
I didn't actually do the math, but I'm just going to guess that these probably would be in the $900,000 range, because I've seen some down on, I think it's Elm.
So is the project not feasible at 900 per unit for sale?
It's not about that. It's more about what the mortgage rates are and how quickly they would go.
I understand. So I'm asking, is it feasible if you're at a market rate for sellout?
I'm a little bit more in the apartment business.
Okay, so you really want it as a rental in all ways?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Like I said, you know, if I'm in the middle of a project across the street, One Brook Road was all condominiums. So I'm just not really sure. It's, like you guys said, it's a really cool project. And for me, it's new for me to be in this type of project. I might find, as I age a little bit, I might really like doing some of these really cool, smaller projects that don't demand the investors and things and capital that you need. And it might really, really fit a need for what I do and find pockets and create cool housing. I'm just not sure. I wouldn't want to answer that to you today and then look like a fibber later on, but I'm really not sure. It could be a year from now, and I could say, hey, the market's red hot, and I'll do condominium. I really don't know. I'm going to kind of play it by ear. But I'm in that business, so for me to run these and manage them, it's really no sweat off my back to do that. So that's, you know.
So you're asking for a blank check? You don't want to commit? You're asking for a blank check?
No, I don't want to commit. And technically, yeah, okay.
You're asking for the blank check. You want to be able to decide when it's done if you're going to rent them or sell them.
Yeah, I don't really, yeah, yeah, exactly.
I just want a clearance.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Frankel?
I love it. It's great-looking, the work that you put in, getting the other accesses to the city. And Mr. Austin, Steve Austin, you're a long man. And tell our age. So I think it's going to look great, and I get the stress reduction of four units.
That's great. Steve Austin, you're talking about?
I'm not the worst. A chaotic man.
Yeah, no, I think it's an amazing improvement to that site and that area. I remember we had reservations about the other piece on the other corner. Every time I go by there, that looks really nice.
Yep, very beautiful.
And to this day, to just imagine that it could have been closed up or garage. Because it's out of the floodplain. And that went on and on. I wanted to do the townhouses originally, the DEP farm. So we put it all up front. But that, everybody asked me, open the garages? I'm the garage, the easements in the floodplain. I had to build a bit of a floodplain.
Around one.
What are you going to do?
I have no idea.
And it happens a lot, but the signs change. I remember.
I thought I was going to call them. It's just some micro right now. I got to fill a building just to get payment of mortgage. And they told me, yeah, you'd like to have someone have a piece of money in it, that way they don't take care of it, I guess. But, hey, Mike could be down there making sure it's nice.
The question is, can it be a condition of an approval that it be?
No. The sort of plans it says right now, we don't know. I'd go with that. All right, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First call, second call? Come up, Mike, please, name. Name and address. She lives right next door.
Hi, I'm Lila Johnson. I live at 139 School Street.